I'd like to welcome you to Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if we could, I'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather tonight here in your presence. We ask that you keep your guiding hand on us as we conduct the business of the county and for our residents. We thank you for our first responders in our law enforcement and fire service, our frontline medical workers, our corrections workers, both with the county and the Michigan Department of Corrections, and all those dealing with COVID-19. We ask that you keep them safe and healthy. We pray for those battling COVID, their families, and the families of those lost to COVID. Please help guide us in our deliberations tonight, in Jesus's name, amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baird?
Present.
Commissioner Wells? Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Alwell?
Here.
Chairman Shotwell?
Here.
Eight present.
Entertain a motion? For approval of the agenda?
Support.
Have a motion and support? Any additions or deletions? Mr. Baird?
When we get to the consent agenda, I would like to let him see.
When we, when we get to the consent agenda, we'll take those then, Tony. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
No, nothing.
Okay. All in favor, please show your hand for aye. Those opposed, please show their hand. I have a passing eight-zero, Amanda.
Thank you.
We have no awards and recognition. Communications and petitions, I would like to receive a letter that was shared with me in March on behalf of constituent and the Road Department and the hard work that they've done working in the neighborhoods. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Michelle?
Top of a public comment. First on the list is Jeff Kirkpatrick.
Okay, my only comment is I'd just like to thank the county employees, the dispatchers, the first responders, for everybody working during this timeframe. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Michelle?
L. Caverson? I don't see him on the meeting. Russ Jennings? Go ahead, Russ. I don't think this participant is unable to mute, they've been unmuted. Do you want to move on?
Can you unmute him, Michelle, or no?
I'm trying to, but it's not allowing me to.
If he, if I can interject, if he can hear us, maybe he can see the microphone on the screen and unmute it himself.
Please note that, Michelle, and we'll come back to him.
Will do.
Here we go.
Are we on now?
Yes, sir.
You're on. Go ahead.
Hello, Commissioners. I hope everybody and their families are being safe during this time. I'd just like to address the commission today. Friday, I was pleased to hear that you guys were considering resolutions to lease up, loosen up, lease locally some work restrictions within Jackson County. As much of my employees that you guys were considering that after the weekend and doing a little bit of research and stuff, I'm wondering if maybe that's not premature, and I'd rather see you guys maybe consider endorsing or a resolution of endorsement of the Republicans, Senate Republicans, proposal to get Michigan back to work safely. My other reason for coming in on this strange way of conducting a county commission meeting is for my endorsement of Aaron Lozey to be appointed to the Jackson County Board of Commissioners with the resignation of Dr. Thompson. I'd like to thank Dr. Thompson for his service to the community. I know he very much enjoyed serving the community. I've known Aaron for a couple of years now, but I've also known Mr. Polesky. I know he is also somebody asking for the appointment to the position. And we're actually fortunate that we have two very qualified individuals, and I think there's more, but I know those two personally to represent us on the Board of Commissioners. But I would like to endorse Aaron for his hard work in the sixth district in the past several years. I talked to a commissioner late yesterday evening, and he's expressed, and I agreed with him at the time, that we, they should probably try to appoint a commissioner that would probably win in the primary, which would be difficult to figure out. But then I got thinking more about that is, Mr. Polesky's been around a long time as a county commissioner and a state rep, and I think people know
Thirty seconds.
how he is. I would like to see Aaron get a chance to that appointment, maybe for a testing run, and let the voters decide on August 6th who should win in that primary. Thanks.
Lance Shively?
Good evening. This is Lance Shively. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, good evening. My name is Lance Shively. I live in Michigan Center. I wanted to address you guys about some of the things that are going on here in the state with our governor and these restrictive stay-at-home orders placed upon everybody. I think most people are smart enough at this point to realize that if they are very concerned about this problem, they can wear gloves and wear masks to the store and things like that. However, I don't believe that allowing people out on a lake on a kayak is any different than allowing them on a fishing boat with a motor on it. I think quite a few of these, these rules that our governor has foisted on us are overly restrictive and lack a lot of common sense. So I would hope that the board would try to at least make some type of a resolution to send up to the governor to tell her that the, the people in Jackson County where the Republican Party was founded are not very, very happy about her overuse of her executive power here in the state of Michigan. That's all I've got to say this evening. Thank you.
Okay. The next participant is not on the meeting. Peter Bormuth? I don't see Peter on either. Dwyala Odom? So some of the registrants have not registered. If they, if they didn't register with their name, they're not showing up that way. I'm trying to find them by their phone number, but none of the individuals are registered that way. Brian Schupack?
Hi, this is Brian Schupack. We're Schupack Sporting Goods downtown here. Seventy-four years old, proud to say that. Wanted to thank all you guys for everything you've done. Just concerns on the restrictions of the small business. Seems all the, all the box stores, grocery stores, gas stations can be open. Thousands of people going through them, and we don't hear any cases really to say so of the workers that would get in the virus. Just think that the small businesses, especially downtown here throughout Jackson, need to be able to be open. We are able to put restrictions on it for how many people come in and make sure have hand sanitizers and all of our customers, employees have masks and that. I think that it's a little blown out of proportion, in my opinion. Just like to see like for us to open our small businesses back up. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Jennifer Gallagher?
Good evening. My midday update from Henry Ford Allegiance Hospital says that 53 people are currently hospitalized here in Jackson due to COVID-19. I don't know when that's ever happened, that many people being hospitalized for the same reason. And according to MLive, as of yesterday, 11 people have died here in Jackson County. There have been 255 confirmed cases of this virus. That doesn't include all the unconfirmed, untested cases. It also does not include the positive COVID-19 cases in our prison. This crisis is deadly serious. Commissioner Shotwell's quoted in MLive article about this meeting as saying, "I can't buy dirt and seeds and vegetables to feed my family." However, this just isn't true. I can walk into The Hobbit and buy seeds and soil to start my garden tomorrow morning if I want to. I called them today. They have those things in stock, and they're open for business, for example. It's completely unnecessary for our County Board of Commissioners to be spending valuable time passing resolutions that are meaningless like this and only serve to sow confusion and discord when people are dying from this highly contagious virus. We need to come together and be emphasizing safety. Thank you.
That concludes public comment requests.
Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry, one, one more jumped in. He came, I finally, Peter Bormuth, will we allow him to speak?
Go ahead.
I'll put him on. Okay. Where'd you go, Peter? There he is. Okay. Go ahead, Peter.
The virus, hello?
Yep, go ahead.
I wanted to address the Commissioners on two issues. The economic situation after the virus concerns are over. Going forward, I think we are going to be in a new economic environment, a deflationary environment that this nation has not seen since 1930s. And I hope that all the Commissioners understand the difference between this potential depression and previous recessions that you've all dealt with. I don't believe any of you lived through the Great Depression, and I hope you will refresh your memory by going back to the history books and seeing what happened to states, cities, counties, municipalities during that crisis. The other thing I'd like to comment on is our governor's orders, the stay-at-home orders. I too feel like there are major inconsistencies in them, although they are, the general order was necessary to help people and to prevent people from dying. But I agree with the gentleman who spoke about being able to go out in a canoe but not being able to go out in a motorboat. Why shouldn't you be able to go out in a motorboat? But most importantly, why are the churches not closed? Why do you get to go to a gathering at your church of 2,000 people if you go to some mega church and then go out and potentially infect all of these other people? It's just a political decision, and it's absurd. If you're going to close everyone's business, the churches are just another business. I mean, all they're selling is, you know, some idea of heaven, some sense of security and comfort. It's no different than any other business. Why should they be allowed to meet? I, you know, there was a court case way back in 1907, I believe, and I think it was Jacobson versus Massachusetts. And the Supreme Court of the United States, it was brought by a Christian minister during a smallpox epidemic, and the Supreme Court of the United States ruled the government has a, the government has a right to close you down during an epidemic which affects the health and well-being of its citizens. So the powers that have been assumed by the governor are not outrageous, but the way in which she is applying them is completely inconsistent and arbitrary. Thank you.
Public comment now complete, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to District Seven Commissioner candidate presentations. Is Mr. Lozey ready?
District Seven is already filled.
Mr. Lozey is present. I will promote him to panelists right now.
District Six, I apologize, Daniel.
There you go.
All right, so I'll just do a brief introduction. My name's Aaron Lozey. I was born and raised in Jackson, lived in Concord, Michigan, K-12 Concord. After high school, I joined the US Navy in boot camp. They said if you join the subservice, you'll make more money. I volunteered. Turns out, you don't make more money for a decade, but that's how boot camp goes. Anyways, after that, I went to the second and third hardest technical schools in the world. And after public school, that was quite a shock. It was 10 hours a day mandatory, and after that, I had to go in for at least three to five hours a day plus weekends. So I did about 80 hours a week schooling for a year and a half. After that, I was assigned to the NR-1 and then the USS Connecticut. My time in the service taught me to think on my feet, especially when you're deployed, and they're told that you are now going to stay out for another couple of months, and you have to make sure that you can do all the necessary maintenance with the things that you brought in for two months left of deployment. After I got out, I spent some time taking care of my mother and father. Unfortunately, my mother passed away due to complications from surgery, and my father is now being taken care of down south. And I've been lucky enough to be able to have the time in the past to get involved in local politics. I declared my candidacy for the sixth district County Commissionercy in October of 2018, as reported on by Ken Wyatt. And since then, unfortunately, because Alex Tompkins has had health issues, he's not been able to make as many meetings as he would like. And so I was able to do that by talking with County Commissioners at Republican Party meetings, by going to meetings when I was able to, or by reading minutes and checking the consent agenda, and then bringing that back to the communities. Some of the things that I've done for those communities is Spring Arbor. They were told by the state that they can no longer get water from summits, and that they had to have their own wells. And then about a year into this, after Spring Arbor spent $180,000. Granted, they are a large township, but that's still a lot of money for any municipality. The state came in and told them that they were wrong and that they needed to do something else. I brought this to Julie Alexander and Mike Shirkey's attention, and now they've been working with the state to try to get that rectified. If I entertain any questions that anybody may have for me, hopefully, I apologize about getting the emails of, with the letters of recommendation from Concord and Palaski out late. I thought I had sent them, but I did not. I didn't find any, but if you had any questions they'd like to ask.
Corey, you're muted if you're talking.
Pardon me, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's my understanding that you got a letter of recommendation from, was that the Concord Village or the Township of Concord's Board of Trustees?
The Concord Village. Actually, L. Caverson is the Concord Township supervisor, and he was unable to talk for some reason.
Okay. And then the other letter that I read came from Palaski Township. Am I correct?
That's correct, sir.
From their Board of Trustees?
From the entire Board of Trustees, yes. And it's a very diverse board.
I can imagine. So, and I'm taking it that's because you were attending their Board of Trustees meetings regularly and regularly interacting with them?
Yes, sir. Yep. And then if they had any questions, I would do best that I could to answer them, or if I couldn't answer them, I would find the information and give that to them. We've had some issues over my swaying select with the culvert, and we've tried to work with the train commission about that, but I am not a county commissioner. I only have so many things that I can do. I basically remember the whole.
Okay. I don't know how you're coming through to the other Commissioners, but you're pretty distorted to me. So I'm gonna keep my rest of my questions real short. They're just gonna be yes or no answers.
Okay.
My first question is, with Mr. Tomp, or with Dr. Tompkins leaving, he was on quite a few boards, and we also had a couple of subcommittee boards that weren't filled as it was. Those being the Board of Public Works, Food Protection Hearing Board, Lifeways, Human Services Coordinating Alliance, Sanitary Code, Board of Appeals, Region Two Planning. If you were to be appointed, would you be willing to serve on at least four of those committees?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay. And my other question is, do you plan on turning in mileage or per diem charges for those meetings?
Uh, no.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Alwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Corey covered most of my questions. I just wanted to comment on behalf of Aaron. Aaron was kind enough to send us all an email over the weekend that gave his resume type information, and he also provided contact information, I think, for seven of the elected officials from the district, and asked that we call them. I did take time to call each of, each of them, and I was able to speak with six of the seven. The seventh, when I left a message for and did not get a return call, that was this morning when I called him. They all spoke highly of Aaron, talked about his regular attendance at their meetings, and I think he was appointed to one of the committees, maybe for the Village of Concord. I think he had been appointed to Parks and Recs or something. So they spoke highly of him, and while I had each of them on the phone, I also asked them about Earl Polesky, knowing that Earl was likewise likely to be a candidate. Those that had previous interactions with Earl also spoke highly of him. So I just wanted Aaron to know that I did follow up with calls to all those elected officials, and they all spoke highly of him.
Thank you, sir.
Tony?
Aaron, can you tell me, how long have you been on the Seventh District Committee?
I've not been, oh, a year, just over a year, for Tim Morges. I've been the Jackson Kyra representative for over a year. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other Commissioners?
I've got, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Two, two questions for you, Mr. Lozey. One, thank you for reaching out for me. My first question would be, if you do not get appointed tonight, do you still plan to seek the seat through, through, through election?
We recommend that you maybe dial in on the phone so that they can, we can hear you. If you can't hear what you're saying. If you wanted to dial in, it would probably be better for the Commissioners to hear what you're saying.
Okay, what the phone, or, sorry.
Corey, could you mute and unmute yours, please?
Yeah. It didn't allow that. What is the number? No, no, it's, I don't know the number, I mean, message.
It's 312?
Okay.
626? 6799.
Okay.
You need to enter the, the number.
What's the meeting ID? It says it doesn't exist. 962 or just 962? If we turned off my camera, would that help?
Go ahead.
How does that, how does that sound to everybody?
Better here.
Okay. Sir, could you repeat question, Mr. Mahoney? Sorry.
That's okay. My question for you, Mr. Losi, is if you do not get appointed tonight to the seat, do you still plan to seek the seat through, through election?
Yes, sir, I do. I put in a lot of effort and I feel that I will benefit the constituents of District Six because I am at the meetings, I'm out talking to people and asking questions and people feel comfortable approaching me about situations that they may have.
Last question, if I may, Mr. Chair. My last question for you, Mr. Losi, is what would be your outlook on the current financial status of the county?
We've obviously caught a snag and we're going to have to go through the budget and find ways in which to recover from this. Ideally, the federal government will provide us with some relief like they're talking about with this bill. We'll have to see how that passes through the House and Senate, but as it stands, we're going to have to really reach across all the departments and find ways in which, without cutting necessary services, that we can find money in the budget to make sure that we provide everything we need to and we've promised to the constituents of Jackson County.
I would like to make a clarification here, just so the commissioners are aware. Dr. Tompkins was attending Lifeways meetings on the nights of these meetings, so he was representing the full Board of Commissioners at Lifeways. Those involve the nights when normally you would attend the township meetings, just so commissioners are aware that he wasn't just sitting at home, he was involved in Lifeways, which is an over $50 million a year budget. Any further, Mr. Losi? Michelle, would you like to kind of?
Yes, we'll do that.
Very good. Let me just start the video here, excuse me. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you, Michelle, for conducting a very difficult meeting process. I want to also, preliminary to my discussion, just thank Dr. Tompkins for his service to the board and I hope that his health improves so that, so that he finds himself able to live a long and excellent life, such as he's given me when he fixed my arm after I fell off my bicycle. This was a few years ago. My name is Earl Polesky, I am 63 years old, I am married to my wife Candy and we have two grown sons and three grandchildren. I have lived in Spring Arbor Township almost continuously since 1978. I've been a CPA, Certified Public Accountant, since 1981. I attended Albion College, my BA is from there. I went to Walsh College and received a master's degree in taxation science from there in I was in the oil and gas industry and in public accounting for a number of years, but my first entry into, into government was to be appointed to the Spring Arbor Township Planning Commission, where we drafted the land use plan there. That looked pretty interesting. I ran for and was elected to the county commission here in Jackson in 2006. I served four years there, three years as the vice chair under Chair Shotwell. During that time, it appeared clear that the state of Michigan could use some help in the nature of fiscal management. And so I ran for and was elected to the 64th District State House seat in 2010 and served three years as a, as a state representative on a number of committees, mainly appropriations, but I also chaired the Financial Liability Reform Committee for four years there. After I termed out of the House, you can only do three, two-year terms in the House, I turned out and was appointed to direct the Michigan State Housing Development Authority in 2017. And then when we got a new governor, she invited me to find somewhere else to work. So it is my pleasure to offer myself to the board as a county commissioner to serve with you. I appreciate Aaron Losi's military background and thank him for his service. My sole military service was to flunk an ROTC physical in 1973. I, I wanted to be in the Navy too, but it didn't work out and things happened a little differently. What I bring to the county commission, what I would hope to bring to all of you, would be a thoughtful and pragmatic experience and ability to work with everyone as we had to do in the House of Representatives in Lansing and on the county commission years ago. I think I also bring a financial discipline that, as several have mentioned tonight, is going to be needed in these very extraordinary times we find ourselves in now and which we will find ourselves in for the coming, I believe, several years. Things will be different. My view for the, for the county is, of course, the Board of Commissioners are the fiscal discipline group. It's our job to do the budget, it's our job to do it right and to keep an eye on it well. We have to have steady stewardship with the budget to make sure that we carry on those essential activities that the county must carry on. The sheriff's department, the courts, the health department, the medical care facility, roads. I think what has not been mentioned here tonight is, with respect to roads, I suspect in the next few years, Director Bolt may find that the Act 51 revenues available for our roads will be impaired. None of us are driving right now and the value of fuels is down. Another thing that I think we did in the county commission years ago and which I would like to see continue is to continue to maintain and grow an excellent relationship with the city of Jackson. The city is critical to our county and it's important that we maintain a good relationship there. I do appreciate the chance to introduce myself and, Mr. Chair, I'm open to questions as it may be convenient.
Can you unmute yourself, Darius?
Okay, is that better now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted just to ask a quick question as relates to the last comment you mentioned about the relationship between Jackson County and the city of Jackson. With your tenure as a county commissioner, how did you help to foster that relationship?
Okay. Thank you, that's an excellent question, Commissioner. During, I think the relationship between the city and the county has, has ebbed and flowed depending on the personalities involved. I think we were fortunate several years ago to have a pretty good relationship with the city. At the time, we were sharing services and I'm trying to remember, I don't think we were sharing IT services, we were sharing, I believe, at one time, human resources services. And I think to the extent we can share and, share costs and share efforts in a coordinated way, the county generally, which includes the city, is in better shape.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just no questions for Earl, just wanted to echo the comments that I gave during Aaron's talk, that the elected officials that I spoke with that had had interaction with Earl, I had good things to say about him as well and I thank him as well for the thorough resume that he provided to us.
If I may mention also, Mr. Chair, as a, as a matter of courtesy, I have not attended many local meetings recently, so that is to Aaron's credit that he has been able to do so. When I was with Mishda, I was required to carry on my work in a very nonpartisan way. And then, of course, as an ex-representative, I want to make sure that my successor, Representative Alexander, has a chance to make the presentations at local meetings such as what might normally be done.
Hello, Earl, how are you?
I'm well, sir, thank you.
I'm just curious, I have some other questions, but I just heard you comment and I kinda jumped out at me. Why would attending your local community meeting be discourteous to Representative Alexander?
Maybe discourteous was, was not a good word. It's important, especially in the, in the times of term limits, for representatives and those who are term limited, to have a chance to establish themselves with their local units of government. And so I think it would be difficult, unless I was running for some other office, to be at a, at the same meeting with Representative Alexander. It almost looks competitive and I want to be as courteous and to my fellow public servants as I can be.
So if you were a county commissioner, you would still feel that way, that you would be competition to Representative Alexander?
No, no, no. If you're a county commissioner, one of your jobs is to communicate with local units of government. And, and in the four townships covered by this particular district, I was present as a state rep and with respect to those townships that I served in my previous district, I was there virtually every month.
Other questions are pretty much the same ones that I asked Mr. Losi with, with the doc leaving. Obviously, we've got openings, plus we had other openings that weren't filled. I'll mention them to you again, the Board of Public Works, the Food Protection Hearing Board, Lifeways, Human Services Coordinating Alliance, Sanitary Code Board of Appeals, Michigan Association for Local Public Health and the Region Two Planning Committee. Would you be willing to serve on four or more of those committees?
Yes, I, I did serve on a number of boards when I was in the county commission before, including the airport board and Region Mid-South Substance Abuse Commission, and that was when I was still working. Now that I find myself semi-retired, I'm sure I would have time to, to fulfill my responsibilities on those boards to which commissioners are appointed.
Okay, and then with the same follow-up question, if you were to serve on those along with the regular meetings, do you plan on turning in mileage and per diem to the county for payment?
Well, let me preface my remarks by saying anybody who gets, who is a county commissioner is not doing it for the money.
I would agree.
And so I don't need that, that reimbursement and so, no, I would not claim reimbursement.
Thank you, sir. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Evening, Mr. Polesky, how you doing?
I'm very well, sir, thank you.
Good, good. I would ask the same two questions that I asked Mr. Losi, starting with, if you are not appointed at tonight's meeting, do you still intend to run for the seat through election?
I am registered to run and I plan to run.
Okay, thank you. And then same second question, what is your standpoint on our current fiscal situation in the county?
It is, I don't think it is dire as yet. I think the actions that you plan to take tonight with respect to budget reductions are probably only the beginning of what may need to be done in the county. I think the, the numbers that I saw in the board pack indicate some reductions of revenue through April 30th. Among my questions would be, what might be the implications going forward and are those the only changes that we may see? I think we're going to see a great many financial difficulties and changes in the, in the coming months. The new normal will not be normal as we have seen it. And so we need to be prepared to adapt to that and I think if I am appointed to this seat, you may find yourselves from time to time hearing a rather pointed question from me over financial matters. That's, that's what has, that's what has to be asked. Anyone who's worked with me before will know that, but I think that serves the public by, by getting the information out, by making sure it's well-vetted and by acting decisively to deal with those changes that we made in the bank.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other commissioners? Seeing that, Earl, thank you very much and we will go on with our agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Item 6B, is there a nomination for the appointment of the sixth district? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will make a nomination first, I'd like to say thank you to both candidates for applying and it's really refreshing to have two great candidates to pick from and I would like to nominate Earl Polesky.
Thank you. Tony Bear?
I would like to nominate Aaron Losi and I agree with Dave, it's good to have multiple qualified candidates.
Thank you, Tony. Just quick verification, I think I know the answer, but there's no other applicants that came in last minute today? No, sir. Thank you. Amanda, when you're ready to call the vote, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear?
Aaron Losi.
Commissioner Walls?
You gotta unmute yourself, Rod.
Earl Pulaski?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Losi.
Commissioner Duckham?
Phil, you need to unmute yourself.
Losi.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Pulaski.
Commissioner Williams?
Pulaski.
Commissioner Elwell?
Pulaski.
Chairman Chatwell?
Pulaski.
Five Pulaski, three Losi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, at this time, I would like the clerk to swear in appointed Commissioner Pulaski, so he can be voting on the actions that we'll be taking this evening. Amanda, are you ready?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Earl, do you want to unmute yourself? Raise your right hand, thank you. You do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner according to the best of your ability.
I do.
All right, thank you.
Welcome, Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, again, wanted to thank Aaron for applying. Hopefully, he'll stick around and seek appointment to some of these openings that we have. I think he also would be a huge asset to the Board of Commissioners and the county.
Would any other commissioners like to comment? Go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, welcome, Commissioner Pulaski. Don't take the vote against your personal. I'm one that wants to see new blood, and a little disappointed in the outcome, but I'm sure you're going to be a great addition to the team, and I look forward to working with you.
Commissioner Bear?
Welcome, Earl.
Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Phil.
Welcome to the board, Earl. Look forward to working with you.
Once again, thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Just want to say that this was a very, very difficult decision to make, as I'm sure it probably always is when commissioners have to pick other commissioners to take a seat that is normally earned by election. And I just want to say, Mr. Losi, I think, and hope that you still run for the seat, and wish you good luck if you do continue to run. Want to welcome Mr. Pulaski, and say that my decision tonight was based solely off of experience and understanding that we could use that experience, even if just for a short amount of time, due to the situation that we're in financially right now.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your vote.
Darius?
Thank you. My comments echo the same to Aaron. Thank you for applying. We had a chance to talk over the weekend and exchanged, I think, if I remember correctly, and I hope you continue to your pursuits in running for the seat. And then, Mr. Pulaski, thank you again for filing and for running, or, sorry, for submitting your application today. We thank you for the opportunity to help us in any capacity that you might be able to do that. And so, I look forward to working with you and to help with any work that we can do as we continue to build the growing relationship we have with the city of Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your vote.
Mr. Walls?
Welcome, Earl. Glad to have you on board.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it very much.
Anyone else on the commission? We have, moving forward on the agenda, we have no special meetings of standing committees. Entertain a motion for approval of the March 17, 2020. Moved by Commissioner Bear, supported by Commissioner Kennedy. Any correct? Commissioner Mahoney?
Just wanted to make a request to pull item 9B?
No, no, we're at the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, no corrections to the minutes.
That's okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Minutes have passed. We now arrived at the consent agenda. I believe someone just wanted to pull 9B. Was that, could you raise your hand? Daniel, okay? I believe, Corey, you had something?
No, I was thinking we were voting, so, no, my hand didn't mean anything.
Okay. Tony Bear?
11C, Finance 2020 Budget Amendment. We move that to new business.
We'll move it to General Government, it'll become item D.
Would you repeat that for me, please?
Yes, sir. Item 11C, Finance 2020 Budget Amendments, will be moving to Standing Committee Report, General Government, item 15D.
Thank you.
Item 9B will become 13B. Any other items? Can I have a motion in support for the consent agenda now?
I'll move.
Supported by Tony Bear, moved by Commissioner Elwell. I'd like you to call the roll, please, Amanda.
I apologize. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Pulaski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to remind the commission to please mute your microphones after you voted, and if you want to use a hand signal to vote, I will leave enough spacing between yea and nay. We have now arrived at standing committees, Public Safety and Transportation, chaired by Commissioner David Elwell, the vice chair. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have appointments. We have four boards for appointments, the first being the Airport Joint Zoning Board. It's a term that expires April of 2023. Its current member is Jack Cook. Jack Cook was the applicant, and he's also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor that qualify? Hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Mr. Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next three are all committees. We had no applicants for, and they're vacant. If you want to make a floor nomination, just please raise your hand. The first is the Community Corrections Advisory Board. It's a workforce development appointee. If there are no nominations from the floor, I'll move on to the Region Two Planning Commission. This is for a commissioner appointment. And are there any nominations of any new commissioners or anybody else?
Are you looking for a sacrificial lamb, Commissioner?
That's exactly what we're looking for. I would nominate Commissioner Pulaski.
Any commissioners not serving on Region Two Planning, would you like to serve? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. And all in favor of Commissioner Pulaski? Congratulations, Earl, to your new appointment. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last one is the Emergency Management Advisory Council. It's a citizen-at-large. It's a term that expires April of 2021. Currently vacant, there were no nominations from standing committee. And as I had emailed commissioners, I talked with Tim McEldowney, who is the fire chief for Spring Arbor, and also serves as the summit chief. He applied, and I had Delane include his application with board docs, and from the floor, I would nominate Tim McEldowney for that seat.
Any other nominations? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Nomination passes. Mr. Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the item that was pulled from the consent agenda, which is the Public Defender Fiscal Year 21 Grant Request. And the motion is to approve submission of the proposed fiscal year 2021 grant request and compliance plan to the MIDC for the Jackson County Office of the Public Defender. That is a motion, and after there's a support, I'll have some comments.
Looking for, supported by Walls? Commissioners? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it was Tony that wanted this one pulled, maybe not. I think most of you know that the MIDC plan being forced on us, or that was forced on us, by the state is something I still resent and don't like, and I think it is still a dysfunctional way for government to operate with 83 counties and more courts having to report separately to the state. I still think the best plan would have been for the state to run MIDC completely. It would eliminate a huge amount of red tape, save the taxpayer money, be less confusing, and it would be consistent across the state. I think at this point, we're stuck with this, and I would welcome any explanation of this from either Mike Overton or Deb Kibitsky, and I acknowledge that Tony probably has questions as well.
It was Daniel Mahoney. Daniel, you would have asked to have this pulled. Did you have a question, sir?
I can wait until after Deb goes.
Well, we need to know the question, so we can answer.
This is an annual request. Now that we have our department up and moving, so this is just our annual request. This, I think, is our third request, our third year, and it will be brought every year. The deadline is typically April 30 to submit our grant requests. And this year, they did extend it to May, the end of May, but they're still encouraging those systems that can get it approved and submitted to do so by the April 30 deadline. Ours, we believe, is ready and a good plan, so we'd like to try and submit it by the original deadline.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question that I had, Deb, was, I know we had some financial issues from the year previous with the state. I'm just curious if that was all resolved?
Yeah, we resolved that in January. I went to the meeting in Lansing and spoke before the commission. The dispute was approximately $100,000, and the commission ended up awarding us, I forget the exact number, it was like $58,000 or $60,000, so we got a significant portion of the money that was in dispute.
And then, my second question is, have we attempted to look at any other models? I've heard from some of the people who currently work in that system of being a public defender, that they're not real happy with the setup that we have here. And I'm curious if we've looked at any other different models around the state that are working and consider changing the model in which we run this office?
Yes, we initially had planned, if you look back to our initial plan for 2018, we did have a different model that was proposed and approved, based on future anticipated standards that are potentially going to be imposed upon us, the hourly wage, which is going to range between $100 and $120 per hour for attorneys, contractual attorneys, as well as caseloads. I met with the courts, the prosecutor, you know, the undersheriff, Chris Cool, was involved in some of those meetings, finance, and everybody agreed that moving, transitioning to a new model, the model that we currently have, would be the best route to go, based on some of the new standards that are being proposed, and based on Jackson County's needs. I've been following what's working. I actually attended a Zoom meeting today for about three hours for MIDC, so I am keeping track of what other communities are doing. Our chief public defender, he's new, but I'm sure he'll have contact with other communities as well. But we do keep track of what's going on. I also attend meetings regularly with MAC. There's a work group with MAC that, county administrators and legal representatives for various counties, and I've been attending those work groups as well. So, that's been going on about two years. So, we do keep track of what's happening, and if anybody has any concerns, they can feel free to contact me, or Brian Fortino, our chief public defender.
Mr. Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the end, I'll end up supporting this, but I think most people know that I was fighting it from the start, but I think they've got us so far into it now that we can't turn back. But, Deb, I've got just a couple of questions, simple ones, really. Is it fair to say that things with MIDC are inconsistent across the state on similar issues from one county that are inconsistent in the resolution to another county?
Yes, absolutely, and that's part of the work group that I've been working with. Like I said, there's the Isabella County Administrator, Alleghen County, there's several county administrators and legal attorneys that represent the counties that have been attending these meetings. And we try to steer away from those inconsistencies that have been presented to some of the communities, so we're trying to attack those and address them to make sure there's a more consistent So we're trying to attack those and address them to make sure there's a more consistent response from MIDC.
And is it also fair to say that there's a lack of understanding on how things actually work for government on many issues with the staff from MIDC?
Yes, absolutely.
And then lastly, I think one of the issues that I recall was MIDC wanting our county to go back and change budget issues on budgets where the books were already closed on. Is that accurate?
Accurate, yes, that is true, yep.
Thank you. I doubt that MIDC people are listening, but if they are, please have the state take it over.
Just had a... Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one more follow-up question. I was trying to think of what it was, but you mentioned that we kind of talked to quite a few people around the county that are involved in our legal system. I didn't hear any mention of meetings with our judges or our current public defenders. Has their input on the way we're running this system been considered?
Yes, Daniel, I haven't met with them recently, just for clarification. But when we were transitioning and looking at submitting a different plan about a year and a half ago, two years ago, I included everybody in those meetings. Like I said, from finance to the undersheriff, the courts were involved, the prosecutor, the courts, including court administration and the judges. So all of those people were consulted. And like I said, if there is a change of heart, I haven't heard one, but they were included in the meetings when we were looking at what plan was best for Jackson County. So again, those weren't recent meetings, but they were included in the meetings before.
So Deb, my final question, and thank you, thank you so much for such thorough answers, and I know you've worked really, really hard on this. My final question is if there is a sense that we need to make a change in the way that this program is set up, the way this department is set up, is there room for that, not necessarily in this current year that we're applying for, because I understand that it works like a grant and we have to utilize the money in the way that we apply for it, which means I completely understand if we can't change the system this year. But if there's room, how would we go about that? And what's your thoughts on us having some type of meeting with all these entities in the same room? Because it sounds like, at least from the input that I've gotten from judges and some of the people in the public defenders, they don't feel like their input was highly considered. What would you feel like, or how would you feel if we had some type of group meeting with all those individuals in the same room who are part of this system to talk about the way this system is set up and looking to change or fix anything that they see that we may need to change?
I'm happy to meet with anyone who has some concerns and wants to share them. One of the problems, Daniel, that we've had is because of that dispute that we had in January, that financial dispute, MIDC actually told us that we weren't allowed to move forward with our plans. We weren't allowed to hire people. We weren't allowed to do anything. So we actually are not up and running completely. So we just actually in March started taking case referrals so that the attorneys that are in the public defender's office will have cases that they will handle from beginning to end. So we're just getting to the point where we're starting to get those referrals and starting to work the system like it actually should be working. Up until that point, we were only doing arraignments, so we were only doing a portion of what we were supposed to be doing. I talk to Brian Fortino pretty regularly regarding, you know, anything that's going on at the public defender's office. So we're looking forward to getting up and running, actually. But any concerns or changes that people would like to talk about, I'm happy to meet. Brian and I can meet. Our deputy public defender is Kareem, and I'm sure he'd be happy to participate as well. So I'm happy to have those conversations with anybody who wants to meet.
Dave?
Just briefly to echo Daniel's comments, to thank Deb for her hard work on it. She's very knowledgeable in it. I'd hate to think of where we are without her working on it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Elwell.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I made the motion already. I don't think we voted yet. Amanda, correct?
Correct. Yet.
Okay, so we have the motion. Amanda, do we have the support on it or not?
So we give Commissioner Elwell the make to be move the motion. Does anyone support it? Okay, we have support from Tony Bear. Any further comments? All in favor, show the sign or say yes. Passed. Thank you, Amanda. Mr. Elwell.
That's all I had to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
At this time, we're on to general government chaired by Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have four items. The first up will be appointments. We have the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The term expires 2023. The current member is Kelsey Heck. Laura Schlecty was an applicant, and Laura Schlecty was a committee recommendation. And this is an appointment sent to us by the city. We just have to approve it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Okay, Cory, I need a support first.
All right.
Darius, supported. Go ahead, Cory.
Did we skip Human Services? You're muted. You're muted.
I did, Cory, because I'm getting a clarification from the administrator controllers at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we'll go back to it.
All right.
Okay, second appointment is for the economic...
Those actions? Any further questions done it? All in favor? Those opposed? Carried. Mr. Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Second appointment would be for the Economic Development Corporation. This is a city representative. Again, Kelsey Heck was the member. This term extends all the way out to 2026. Laura Schlecty has been selected by the city, and the committee nominated Laura Schlecty. That'll be my motion.
Support.
Have a motion and support? All in favor? Those opposed? Really carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a public representative for the Economic Development Corporation. Yes, we have a public representative for the Economic Development Corporation. The term is through twenty-three of twenty-five. Currently, it's vacant. Mindy Bradish-Orta has applied. The committee recommended Mindy Bradish-Orta. That's my motion.
Have a motion and support? Walls? Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'll nominate Russ Jennings.
I'm sorry.
No problem. I'll nominate Russ Jennings.
Okay.
Also need clarification on our rules. Does the resident need to live inside of Jackson County?
Not to my knowledge. We have people serving on committees that are not living inside the city at this time, Cory, or the county.
That's not part of our rules.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Are you ready, Madam Clerk, to call the rule?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kennedy?
Jennings.
Commissioner Duckham?
Orta. Orta.
Thank you. Commissioner Poleski?
Bradish-Orta, please.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Orta.
Commissioner Williams?
Bradish-Orta.
Commissioner Elwell?
Bradish-Orta.
Commissioner Bear?
Jennings.
Commissioner Walls?
Bradish-Orta.
Chairman Shawwell?
Orta.
Seven Orta, two Jennings.
Thank you.
That's all for the nominations this evening. Second line of business is fifteen B. It's a fourth quarter of 2019 Employee Retirement System Report.
We're just receiving that. I wanted to let everyone see how wonderful things were before all this started. Need a motion to receive?
So moved.
Support? Darius? Any comments? All in favor? Those opposed? Mr. Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next item would be Item C, our equalization report.
Entertain a motion? Kennedy, supported by walls? Any questions? Seeing no questions, all in favor? Those opposed? Passes. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be our last item for tonight. Item fifteen D will be the Finance Twenty-Twelve Amendment.
Need a motion first?
I'll move it.
Moved by walls, supported by all. Tony, you had questions? Cory, could you mute your mic?
Looking at this, we do these very frequently. In the world I come from, when we give people a budget on projects, where I was the project manager, you live within your budget. There is no option. It seems here that the budget is just a reflection of current events. And that as people spend, not within their budget, when they spend more than what their budget, than the budget they were given, we just modify their budget to reflect what they spent. I don't understand that approach. It always baffles me, going through some of these, just looking at the ones, so many different departments. Equalization, wages, extension, wages, information technology, wages. It looks like we're just hiring new staff that have been added based on these wage amounts. Were we not, are these not new staff, or were we not properly anticipating expansions in the staff? Why are these things always going up?
This is Asaya. I can answer those. For equalization and also for IT, when we were going through the budget process last year, there were unfilled positions that were not accounted for. And so whenever I was starting to go through the budget this year, I started asking about unfilled positions, and that's when I became aware that we were missing that in the budget. So I went ahead and did a budget amendment to account for these unfilled positions. And that's why you're seeing higher wages in those departments, is just to account for them so we don't miss it going forward.
Okay, and does that also explain why there's increases, well, there's some, there's decreases in health insurance, increases in retirement?
Yeah, what happens in those years is that we're preparing a budget a year ahead, and so we're based on the staffing that we have at that time. So as the year goes along, people leave, people come. So we may have a staff that was on health insurance when we were doing the budget, but now they don't have health insurance. They may have cash in lieu, and that may be, you know, the opposite could be true too. So there's always like a variation with benefits whenever we actually start the new budget year, and we just kind of want to get it in line. And we just want to make sure we're accounting for things correctly based on the staffing that we have.
Okay, well, on the cover sheet then, I'll just start with the general fund.
Okay.
First item, we increased two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. Where's that money coming out of to put it in this budget line item?
You know, I don't have the budget amendments in front of me, and it's been a couple of weeks since I've done them. But if I remember correctly, I was increasing revenue in order to account for those increases in the cost. And there was a line item and the revenue budget item that came in higher last year, and that's what I increased in order to cover those costs. I believe it was budget stabilization, if I'm remembering correctly. Is that what you're seeing on there? Again, I don't have it in front of me. I wasn't...
Okay, just on the top of the page, a general fund, county treasurer.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm remembering.
Come is down by a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, and the stabilization went up by two-twenty-one.
Right, that's what I was remembering.
Okay, well, just knowing that we've got budget considerations coming up.
Yep.
Well, I wish I had a better method of predicting these costs.
If I may jump in there a little bit, Tony. You know, Cecilia is correct. People come and go. We have close to seven-hundred employees. You may have a senior employee with a full family, or actually a senior employee who's just a single at this point. Their health insurance cost is going to be substantially less. We replace the person once they're retired. We haven't budgeted for a full family, because you only know what it's going to be until you hire someone, and that. And these are lean budgets. We do not have a lot of fluff. So if we hire someone and they have a full family, the costs are substantially more for their health insurance. So we would have to make it a budget adjustment. You know, the same thing happens when like revenue might go down, or excuse me, salaries may go down because someone quit. And they could have been a more senior person or a highly paid person, or, you know, maybe we didn't fill it, so we're going to make a budget adjustment. There's a lot of reasons why it changes. Sometimes it changes no fault of our own, well, actually, most of the time. The state may change what they've given us, or they're holding monies for us, or it didn't come in, you know, I mean, that stuff happens. In fact, I think we're going to see more of that in the weeks and months to come because the revenues that we have projected, I don't believe the state nor we are going to see. So we're going to have to make some more budget adjustments all through that. Our budget is truly, I hate to say it this way, but it's really our best guess. It's an educated guess a year in advance. We do the research, we try to figure it all out, but at the same time, things happen day every day.
All right, thank you.
Your home playbook, that's for sure. It's not your home playbook, that's for sure.
Thanks for explanation.
Thank you, Tony, for the questions.
Any other commissioner questions?
Mr. Chair, that concludes our business for tonight.
We need to vote, Phil. I do appreciate that. All in favor? Those opposed? Seeing none, it passed. Thank you, Phil. On to Human Services, Vice Chairman Daniel Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda for Human Services tonight are appointments. Let's see here. First, first board is the FEMA Local Board. No current member. Current applicant is myself. This is a request from Mr. Shawwell. Chair designees myself. Just need to have a confirmation from the board. So we'd be looking for a... Looking for a motion in support, Phil?
I'd move to concur.
We have a motion in support. Are there any other nominations? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor, say aye or show a head. The second, second appointment we're looking for, let me know, Mr. Chair, if I'm out of line with this. I would like to just start by asking if there are any other nominations for this particular board, Region Two area on aging. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none, we've got three current members. Yes.
Tony Baer?
I got a question. I am currently on that Region Two area agents, area agency on aging. I'm enjoying that appointment. I believe my appointment goes through 2022.
Correct.
Okay. So that, all right. I just want to make sure I wasn't, want to make sure I wasn't being left out. So I'm still good till 2022.
Correct.
Thank you.
So Daniel, you have nominations for Matt Dame, Megan Kaiser, and Stephen Reisner?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And if it's okay, can we look for a confirmation on all three? We seen that we had no nominations from the floor.
Cory Kennedy supported you? All in favor? Congratulations. Your next item?
All right. Next item on the agenda is Veterans Affair. The seat is vacant. We have no application, no applicants and no recommendations from committee. Is there any recommendations from the floor?
I have one. I'll recommend Russ Jennings.
Support?
Cory?
Yes.
Who did you nominate? I didn't hear it. I apologize.
Russ.
Oh, Russ Jennings, okay. And Tony, you supported it? And Darius did also? All in favor? Those opposed? Commissioner Mahoney?
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Department on Aging Advisory Council. The seat is currently vacant. The applicant is Kathy Lincoln, and the committee recommendation is also Kathy Lincoln. Are there any nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none?
All in favor? Kathy Lincoln's passed. Commissioner Mahoney?
Next item is the Sanitary Code Board of Appeals. We have several seats that are open. No applicants and no committee recommendations at this time. Are there any nominations from the floor for any of those several open seats for the Sanitary Code Board of Appeals? Okay. Looks like we'll have to come back to that one next month. The last item on appointments is going to be the Michigan Association of Local...
I asked you those questions. He's the public representative.
Last item on there is Michigan, Michigan Association of Local Public Health. There are currently no, the seat is vacant. There are no applicants and no recommendations. Is there any nominations from the floor? I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mahoney. I'll accept the nomination.
Any other nominations? Seeing none? All in favor of Daniel Mahoney? Congratulations.
Right. Looks like there are no more appointments tonight, so that concludes our appointments.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, sir.
I do believe the Food Protection Hearing Board is vacated with Dr. Tompkins leaving. And I just wanted to express my interest with my background in the supermarket industry. I was hoping I could be considered for that.
I'll nominate Commissioner Kennedy.
If you, if you could please let Delane know, any commissioner who's interested in any of these seats, and we'll get it on next month and get it to go forward.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think that concludes our appointments for the evening and takes us down to Item B, Environmental Health Fee Relief.
We need a recommendation here. Do we want to spread this out over three payments or four payments or five payments?
Dave?
My personal preference is to spread it out as long as we can.
Cory?
Exact same preference.
Daniel?
Yes, sir.
I did have, I did have the motion there to move the deadline for both those to August 31st. Be good to have a certain, if the board would like to go further, that's fine. But August 31st is what we moved it to from the April 31st, April 30th date.
Okay. So...
What are your preference?
So do we need to make the, do we need to amend that in the motion now? Or are we looking for a motion altogether for this?
Mr. Chair, I'll move it because I have a question, but I...
Okay. Have a motion? And a support from Rodney. Commissioner Elwell, you had your hand up. Did you have a question?
Well, I'm looking through the document, and I was going to seek clarification from Mike on it. And option one on potential options on the food establishment businesses was specifically to collect only the $30 state fee, defer the rest until August, and then begin collecting from there. Is that accurate?
Mike? Yes, yes, we could do it that way.
And also spread it out from that point forward or collect it all at once?
We would make it, we were just moving the due date from now until August 31st. Then, you know, it would be like any other bill, the full amount we do. You could spread it out in one, you know, August, September, October.
I'm getting some echo from, I think somebody's mic is unmuted. So, Mike, if we wanted to, we could hold it in advance until the end of August, August 30th, I think is the date you have. And could we also, from that point forward, collect it monthly or not?
You could. We just made a due date. We just moved back to the simplest thing. We just moved the due date to August 31st, not knowing what's going to happen in the economy and whether we're going to be, you know, open or not open. It very well could be that come through August that we're locked down and people aren't making any money and can't pay that bill, and you'll have to revisit this. That's why we just pushed the date back.
I bet they would like it if they have to pay it on August 31st.
Well...
There is no August 31st.
Oh, is there? No, okay. Is, I said, it says August 31st, okay. I think there is an August 31st, but regardless, 30th or 31st, it'll be okay.
Yeah. 30th on the document. Well, my preference would be to do that. Collect it, begin collecting it in installments after the August, whatever, 30th due date would be my preference. And would that need to be part of this motion or not?
Yes. I would think so.
Yes, sir.
And there's already a motion on the table?
Not yet. We're in discussion. Earl had his hand up, but he did make a motion.
Well, I moved the recommendation, but I guess, I forget the dollar implication of this, but it's all within the same fiscal year, isn't it, Mike?
Correct. That's the idea.
Cory, did you have a question?
No, I was lending support to the amendment, if that was one.
Darius, did you have a question? So I understand what we would like to do is make August 30th our beginning date and then spread it out over the next four months?
Through, through the end of the fiscal year, correct, which is December 31st, correct, Mike? That's my amendment to the motion.
We're doing some calendar math. So Earl, you made a motion to the effect of begin collecting October, or August 30th, and we shall collect the last payment in December. That makes five payments, correct?
That is, that is my motion, sir. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walz, you're supporting that motion?
That's correct.
Any further questions to the motion? Administrator over.
The, this is on the state's year, so this is really, guys, this really ends September 30th. It is the state year for this. This is, this is the state. So you're looking to pay the state their $30 and then pay, and then divide ours on out into the end of the, our fiscal year?
Yeah.
Then we're good. Thank you.
All in favor? Those opposed? Commissioner Mahoney?
Mr. Chair, I believe that concludes the business of Human Services tonight.
Thank you. Yep. We have no unfinished business coming before the board. We have Item 17A, Resolution 4-20.13, Essential Businesses Open in Michigan Safety. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll speak to the motion or to the resolutions first before making a motion. So the resolutions, they're A and B, and they're fairly close in their wording. And Mike, you can stop me if I'm wrong in how I laid out. But so Option A was the first resolution that was written. And then Mike reviewed it, sent it to the attorney. And the attorney left most parts of it intact, but recommended two changes. If you look to Option B, the last whereas on page one is different. And on page two on Resolution B, it is further resolved is also different. To me, what those two changes do are lighten the resolution, take some of the meaning out of it, in my opinion. To be honest with you, I like Option A first. If it doesn't pass, I will make a motion shortly for it, but I'm hopeful that we can pass one of the two. I think it's important that we send a message, and we've spoken and heard and listened and seen pictures of contradictions with the current stay-at-home, stay-safe order. And I think most of us that are reasonable would agree that there are many jobs and businesses that can safely operate. And there's only three or four that are listed here in the resolution. And I refuse to believe that a one-person lawn mowing operation, as an example, cannot go out and operate safely during this COVID pandemic. I think they can, and I think we should make a statement as laid out in Resolution A.
Commissioner Baer?
There's, there's several changes between Resolution A and B. Resolution B includes, and it's a second page, the second, now therefore be it resolved, doesn't exist in Option A. In Option B, the, on page two, the first, the third, it is further resolved, doesn't exist in A. So there's a couple of things that are totally unique to B. Looking at Option A, item, the fifth, whereas, the word essential, by nature, has different meanings to different people. Well, if you're a family struggling to get by on your finances and you have one wage earner, well, however many wage earners you rely on to pay your bills, to that family, that wage earner is essential. And somehow, the governor's definition doesn't include people that are essential to the continued financial success of families. So I don't agree with her assessment. The... The whereas, if you get to Option B, second page, where they're listing the job functions that should be added. You know, a lot of residential and commercial construction, you're not very close to each other. There's a lot of construction jobs, a lot of construction workers that I think need to be allowed to go to work. Their incomes are essential to their family. Greenhouses, lawn gardens, supply facilities. Yeah. Right now, you can't, despite what, a comment that was made earlier during public comment, there's places where I used to buy seeds to do my gardening, but I can't buy them anymore. I used to rent a rototiller to rototill up my garden. I can't rent that anymore. So my ability to plant my garden, which I've always done, and my garden supplements my food supply throughout the year... my food supply throughout the year, governor's orders preventing me from doing that. Continuing on Option B, the the second, it is further resolved. I mean, the last two words, the last portion, portion of sentence there, not to enforce against any citizen an unconstitutional prohibition as a result of this pandemic. No, this pandemic hasn't caused anything to shut down. The executive order shut things down. I'm not going to blame the virus. So when the governor did it. To me, these are they're a good start. I would like to see a lot more teeth in it. That's my input.
Daniel?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I will not be in support of either option A or B. I don't think we have any teeth to put into this resolution. I think that this is purely, as as has been said about other local government decisions that have been made. I feel like this is political grandstanding. There's nothing that we can enforce in this resolution. I don't think that it's our place to make a decision what's best for the public health of our community. And as much as this executive order impacts my own business itself and my ability to make money and provide for my family, I do feel like what's more important is the health of our citizens in our community and understanding how easily this invisible virus will spread from point A to 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 point B. My father is a landscaper in Georgia, and I've told him, although that in in Georgia, I I believe that they're still considered essential. I've told him the danger is not you independently working and doing landscaping while you're out working. The the danger is you stopping at the gas station to get gas. The danger is you going into that gas station to pay for gas. The danger is how far someone can transmit this disease without without even knowing it, just from sneezing in their droplets being suspended in the air. So I feel like that passing a resolution like this would be irresponsible of us as a county board and out of places of of us as a county board to to direct this to to any superior of ours and not necessarily superior any any other officials who have this decision to make. I think that this is kind of above our head and not necessary on our part. I think that we should wait it out and and see what happens. I think at this point, it's not necessary for us to take this step. And I don't I don't think it's necessary. It's not anything that we can enforce. So I I don't think this is necessary or right a right decision on our part.
Corey?
So out of the nine of us, I'd be willing to say that as far as working on the front lines during this, I know you have too, Mr. Chairman Shotwell, but I do it every day. Every day I go in there. And in the beginning, I'd be lying if I said I was, I didn't have a little fear in my heart. But as time's gone on, and I've collected data, and I've talked to various different experts, there's all kinds of different opinions. And quite frankly, what's most disturbing about Governor Whitmer's order is it's her opinion on what's essential. And it's her opinion. She's not an expert. And to hear about that breaks my heart to hear a man that's making a living for his family with a pickup truck driving around. He's put all his life savings into lawn equipment, and he can't go out and mow a lawn. He doesn't talk to anybody. He sends his bill in the mail. There's no human interaction. So that really, really, really disturbs me. So I'd like to see something done about that, quite frankly. But I also hear what Daniel's saying. There's not a lot of teeth in this, guys. And with that being said, when this is all done, my same concern from when we were in the study session is I don't want to get us into litigation that we don't need to be in. She's already put us in a budget hole from the complete shutdown because we haven't had revenue. We know what's coming next tonight. We're going to have to furlough employees because of the shutdown. So I surely don't want to put any more expenses in the courtroom because we're going to be short cash as it is with Governor Whitmer's wisdom. So I'd like to hear from Mr. Overton when this is done, when all the commissioners are done with their comments, on his opinion of where we'd be at should we adopt either of these in civil litigation. Thank you.
Dave, I'm going to let everybody speak once and then come back around, okay?
Sir.
Any other commissioners? Darius?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I spent a lot of time looking at this over the weekend and did some digging of some information myself. And I I have a list of things to share on the matter, but I'll just say this in brief. I I certainly can see both perspectives. I can certainly see both sides of the matter. However, as I continue to look at this and look at the information that I was able to find over the course, over the weekend, even some information that was brought to me even today, I I personally believe that the governor is just doing what she can to protect all citizens. Now, I I understand, and it is hurting to hear and to see individuals and families that are going without, individuals that have, as Commissioner Kennedy mentioned, individuals who have poured their life savings into businesses that aren't able to run. But I think at this point, we can't focus so much on the dollar, but focus on the safety of not just those that are at home, but the citizens of that are all across, not just Michigan, but across the country. And so I think we need to look at what's most important. We want to be able to work. We want to be able to provide for our families, but we also want to be alive to be able to do it. So I will not be in support of either one of these resolutions as we move as we move forward. Now, if there were some other documentation and some other thought that we could put into some things, then I I may be consider moving forward with it. But as it stands right now, with knowing what the governor's position is, knowing what information we do have, and at the end of the day, just looking at this just as an opportunity just to to swing the political arm, I'm not in favor of. I want to be able to make decisions not that promote party, but decisions that are effective, that help all citizens. Again, not just in Jackson County, but all across the United States. So I, in short, when I'm in support of any of the presentations.
Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bottom line is, this is a violation of our civil rights. We have a constitution. You're not supposed to pick and choose when you want to use it. The Constitution does not let a person sitting in Lansing arbitrarily take away your civil rights and your civil liberties. So I will support either one of these. I like A first. Thank you.
Rodney, did you everything you wanted to say? And if if not, I'm going to go ahead and speak.
Well, I I I agree with Phil. I I think that we need to get the community back to work as much as we can. Some of the things that I read that's going to the that being introduced with the House where they're talking about a tier one, tier two, tier three. It gets those people to work that 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 can and do so safely. Social distancing, people wearing masks, I think are all prudent. Safety factors that because I'm afraid that if we don't get this community back to work, we're going to be in worse shape than we are now. People need, people need to work. They need to get money. They need to buy food. They need to, they need to get out with their lives. So I will be voting in favor of this, whether it would be A or B. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Plesky, would you like to speak or?
I I'll weigh in, Mr. Chair. I my view on this is that at the at the state level, there has been trouble distinguishing essential from safe. And I think there's a lot of things that could be done that are perhaps not essential, but could be safe. With respect to our passing a resolution tonight, I would draw commissioners' attention to the fact that I think there's going to be a fair battle in Lansing in the next week or two over whether to extend or whether and to what extent the governor's emergency declaration will be extended and and what will be the scope of the extension. So I wonder whether I frankly wonder whether this is completely necessary tonight, because I think this issue will be addressed largely in Lansing. And if by next board meeting we find ourselves still unduly encumbered by the governor's order, perhaps we revisit this particular resolution. My my personal opinion.
So all commissioners have spoken. I'd like to share where I am on it. I'm in support of Resolution B because I look at the county board of commissioners as an organization that needs to give political advice or advice to our legislature the way a majority of the board of commissioners feels. We all feel that the state should figure out a way to open things up and relax things. We all believe that there was an overreach. We all believe, though, that there if we were to have one of our relatives or a close friend contract the disease and pass away, we would all be very upset. Sometimes we wonder if the right action's being taken. It's my belief that we need to share with our resolution, with the legislature in Lansing and the executive office, the the direction that we would like to steer them toward. It's not telling people that they can go out and go to work immediately. Resolution B is is recommending to the legislature that they figure out a way to allow businesses that are considered essential to be able to take action and begin working, and those that need to be held secure and protected be held secure and protected. And that's my feeling. Corey, you're correct. I've spent the last three weeks on the front line, taking care of respiratory therapists and nurses and truck drivers and also taking care of patients, people with all kinds of maladies and issues that are what we call the at risk population, and making sure that they're properly taken care of and that something else doesn't cause them an issue. It's important for us. That's why I look on Resolution B as to be the one that sends that message that we're a component unit, but we believe that you need to help us get this economy, this state, and everything up and running again. That's my belief. And that's the direction that I, James Shotwell, Commissioner, feel that we should take. You had asked, Corey, that Administrator Overton give you an answer on financials. We can do that. Would you like to hear from Commissioner Elwell first? Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cutting to the chase on it, I think any resolution that we do, much like the Second Amendment resolution, is a political statement. It states out the position of the board of commissioners. And much like the Second Amendment resolution, it is designed, from my position anyways, it was designed to send a message to our higher elected officials. And if we adopt either one of these resolutions, it's for the same thing. But to be clear, neither resolution carries the weight of law. The difference, there's distinct differences and subtle differences, but the key difference is Resolution B has passed muster with our attorney. Mike can speak to that. Besides the subtle differences, Resolution A declares by the county, specific jobs as essential critical workers, whereas Resolution B asks Lansing to do that, asks that they include these things. So I can be happy with B. And when we're in conclusion, I initially was going to move A, but it sounds like the commissioners would be more comfortable with B, at least some commissioners. So with that, I'll hold off on the motion until Mike speaks, if that's your intent, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Overton.
Thank you. First, let me say that our attorney would rather we not do either one of these. He believes that while the board has every right to make a political statement if they so choose, we need to be careful in encouraging someone per se, at least in perhaps in their own mind, to violate the the governor's order. And he says, option A, clearly, he believes would be a step too far. Option B, we went back to the Second Amendment resolution we did some time ago and modeled some more of the language on that. So the lesser of the two, if you will, far as likelihood of being finding ourselves in litigation or being named in some litigation, is B. But to be clear, our attorney doesn't really like either one. He, if you want to make a political statement, make it, he says, but because you're entitled to your opinion like everyone else. But we need to be careful about trying to direct the governor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move Resolution B.
Twister Walz? We have a motion. Are you supporting?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, we have a motion in support at this time for Resolution B, alternative. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Duckham? I don't know. Did he hear me? Commissioner? Commissioner Duckham? Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Plesky? Commissioner Mahoney? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, go ahead. I vote yes.
My screen is freezing up right now, but I just called Commissioner Mahoney.
He's gone.
Oh, he's still appearing on mine, but frozen.
Yeah, he's frozen on mine, too.
Okay, yep, he just it just dropped off. Looks like he's No, okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
I thought we were going to come around for some more comments. I had a whole lot more to say, but I'll vote yes on this one.
Okay. Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell? Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Passes seven, too.
Thank you, Commissioners. At this time, we're on to item seventeen B. I'm going to let Administrator Controller Overton speak now about this.
Thank you. I think, uh, per our discussion last time, um, we had talked about, uh, the reduction in revenue that we have, uh, that we're seeing, that we expect to, to actually grow. Um, right now, we believe by the end of April, we will be, uh, roughly four to $500,000, variables, but, but significantly down in our revenue projection. We, when I say grow, you know, as depends on how long it goes. Um, you know, I mean, just think of all the things that people aren't able to do, be it rounds of golf. I mean, the, the list is long and the services we provide at the courts and things going on at the courts and different things. Um, and, you know, we've, we've, um, to this point, up to this point, we've avoided the furlough. We were hopeful that this would, uh, uh, resolve itself and we would get to move on forward. Uh, but it is becoming very clear that, uh, uh, it's not going to be as quick as one would hope. And that our budget will not be able to sustain this long term. Uh, so we've asked, um, you know, we've been talking internally, obviously, with Department Heads and elected officials and employees and alike, uh, about, uh, starting off with a volunteer furlough. What does that look like? Um, doing some of the more legal research, we use the word furlough because a layoff, uh, has some legal ramifications and implies, um, termination. And in fact, it is a, a word that's used in our retirement system and plan. And would create some problems for employees that we laid off with the retirement system upon their return. The furlough bypasses that, allows us to do that. While at the same time, uh, the state and the Fed have indicated that furlough, uh, will allow them to be, uh, receive unemployment as well as be eligible for the federal additional supplement. And while originally we were hopeful that we could continue to pay the 20% premium share, or excuse me, uh, we paid 80% and the employee could, or that we would pick up their additional 20% premium share that the employees pay for health insurance. We really can't do that. That is construed as pay, uh, in the unemployment system and it, that would create problems for their unemployment claim because they're receiving some pay from the county there. Uh, so I'm told. So what we're recommending here is to, um, furlough, um, employees until, um, the end of May, thirty, May 31st is the date. We, we would revisit that as time goes on, depending on what's going on with the governor, um, making determinations. Uh, and that the employees, we would continue to fund their Blue Cross Blue Shield, but at the same time, uh, they would sign a release when they go and furlough that, uh, or, and a, a document, not necessarily a release, but a document saying that upon reinstatement, that they would, uh, pay back the 20% that we had uh, paid for their, uh, unemployment, or not unemployment, their healthcare. And the healthcare costs, as you know, it varies, depends if you're a single person, a two-person, a full family, you know, those kind of issues, whether it's an HMO or PPO, and there's lots of variability in it all. Uh, so what we've done thus far is kind of said, well, what does, on average, employee make? And how we try to determine that, uh, is we said, okay, take the first quarter of payroll. How many checks did we issue? You know, what's the total dollars divided into it? And that's how we come up with those numbers. Backed, uh, and we backed out, of course, um, our, our health insurance. And, um, figured it out. It's, we estimate around $1,500. And I say estimate because, again, when you look at the average, well, there's a whole lot of high and low salaries in the average, and the people on, uh, who would be furloughed, um, it, it varies, but it tends to lean towards the, 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 uh, lower scale of our, of our wage scale. So it's probably of something a little less than the 1792 the average was. So a- at any rate, so, oh, yeah, one, one quick comment first. Uh, the, um, so far today, HR was calling all the different Department Heads and elected officials, trying to get a sense of who, uh, what the numbers look like as far as, uh, people, uh, willing to take voluntary furlough. Because we're trying to do that, go that route first, uh, and we have about 40 individuals. Obviously, uh, that doesn't necessarily, um, bring us to balance. Uh, so we need to look at that a little more closely, but it is a, a good start. Um, so, uh, Dave, you have a question?
Uh, Mike, I just wanted, well, two questions or maybe one point. So if you have people that are taking a voluntary, that potentially could be more senior people, which could potentially save more money, correct?
If they're more senior, sure.
And then the second thing is something I had followed up with you over the weekend. I had asked if there was a possibility that, uh, employees that do, uh, either get furl-, well, that do get furloughed could potentially use PTO time, uh, to cash out an amount equal to pay for whatever their 20% is. And that is something that you believe that we could do or could offer if they chose to, correct?
No, we don't believe we can because it, it translates into pay. It's still dollars from the county.
Okay.
Legal says no. Uh, other questions, Steve, or?
Corey?
Corey? Yes. So I'd like the details on exactly how you propose collecting the fees of the option that Commissioner Elwell isn't, uh, plausible. Uh, my main concern's still the same. I don't think people that are staying aboard should be paying their premium and people that take a furlough get it covered by the county. It's not right.
They, they would not be. Uh, I'm, but that, they would not be, uh, doing that. We can't, we can't do that. We cannot fund that 20% uh, anyway, uh, with county dollars because while they're on furlough, because it starts to affect the unemployment monies they receive.
No, I know. Question is, how are we going to collect that 20%?
What we would do is, what we would do is, when someone says, we're going to take a furlough, we would have them sign a document that says, upon return to work, uh, we would take it, this out of your check pre-tax, because these are pre-tax dollars. And that would come out of their check over, you know, uh, in fact, uh, I would, I would think within the next month or two. I mean, we wouldn't stretch it out too long, but at the same time, we don't want to necessarily cause a hardship on the employee there. It's monies that we would have paid regardless. Well, that's not right. We saved money by the furlough, let's put it that way. Steve?
Uh, Darius Center Earl?
Okay, just a quick question. Uh, Mike, so the 20% that we, uh, that the, that the individuals would be paying back, would that be only for those that, uh, take the furlough?
Yes, when they're off on furlough, uh, that, if we continue to cover their Blue Cross Blue Shield, we pay 80%, they pay 20%.
Okay, okay, all right. I just wanted to have that clarified. Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm trying to get my arms around the, kind of the scope of the entire, uh, furlough that we're talking about. And I, I just, I just played some quick numbers and tell me, Mike, if I sound like I'm out in left field. If I take a half a million dollars and divide by three, which is approximately the number of pay periods between now and the end of May, and that's even if we get started right now, um, and divide that by 1,800, which is the average amount of pay, I get about 93 people, ballpark. Uh, you know, I mean, it's going to be higher or lower, but, and if you've got 40 volunteers right now, you've, there's going to come a point where someone, uh, is going to be furloughed, who probably doesn't want to be, and you're talking about, according to my rough calculation, another 50 people. Does that sound about right?
That has, that is the potential, yes. Um, there is a number of things of hoops we need to be looking at. Everyone's looking at right now, how do they maintain continuity of services uh, with less people, uh, as well as we have to, uh, we don't want to violate our union contracts. They require notice provisions. There's bumping that starts to enter into that, uh, and as you can imagine, it can become quite, uh, uh, complicated, especially given the, uh, that we're in a pandemic. For instance, you wouldn't want necessarily uh, court employees bumping into the health departments right now, given, uh, what's going on in the health department. They're the lead, uh, tip of the spear, if you will, for this COVID, uh, pandemic. So there's some challenges there that we need to work through, but you are correct that, uh, this is just the beginning. As I've talked to, uh, everybody, the Department Heads, like officials, that I'm like, right now, that we're trying to just do what we can to, to minimize, uh, the, the, the loss that we're, uh, that we're seeing uh, in our budget. And, but at the same time, we've made it very clear that this is just the beginning. Uh, the rest of the year, um, we need to figure out how we're going to make this up because we don't have the depth of fund balance just to, to, to eat it. And then, of course, we are in the, at the same time, working on the 2021 budget, uh, which is, um, um, you know, a, a very much a challenge, too, because, uh, we, we don't know what it is, but we know it'll be less. Uh, and as Earl, you would know, uh, from your experience, uh, once you give an elected official their budget, you can't just arbitrary, you just can't change it. Uh, and the courts are even, uh, more challenging in the sense that they are their, uh, their own employer there. And we can't just, uh, say, hey, we're taking a hundred thousand out of your budget. It doesn't work that way legally.
Uh, Commissioner Bear, then Commissioner Elwell?
Now, Mike, I don't know how you're going to determine who gets furloughed. I'll make a couple of suggestions. Um, follow the governor's mandates. If private enterprise is not allowed to go out and mow lawn, then county employees should not be allowed to go out and mow lawn. Match what she does. Uh, if she has a valid reason for it, you should adopt that reasoning. If private constructor, private construction cannot be done, then county employees shouldn't be doing construction. Let's match her, her concerns. If she had a valid concern why construction work can't be done, then we shouldn't be doing construction work either. So I would recommend we follow the governor's lead.
I would tell you that.
For all the people that she was told to have to stay home.
I could tell you that my approach is, um, a little different than that. I, I sit down with the Department Head and the elected official, uh, and, because they know their department better than anyone else. They know the services they provide, the abilities of their employees. And we try to, uh, work it through so that we can, uh, I, I hate to say when, when, but, but so that we can meet, uh, our, our constituent service needs and minimize our, our budget at the same time. Um, it's, it's, um, it's, it's, um, it's complicated. It's not, it's not an easy thing. Uh, these are people's lives, uh, their incomes, and, uh, it's always difficult. But at the same time, we recognize that we, like everyone else in America, has to live within our means and we need to work on balancing our budget. There's no department, I suspect, will go unaffected, um, to some degree. Good.
Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, just, uh, a couple of questions on the one-page document. So you don't have the number of, of employees laid out, but you've got dollar amounts and those obviously equate to people. Um, on the one-page document, you've got court clerk, and then you've got school liaison and police services. Uh, so what would the intent with the school liaison and police services be? I, I, and I think, to be clear, police services is the college contract. Is that accurate?
That, that is correct. Yeah, that's what that revenue source was. Uh, and the schools, obviously, the schools are closed, so we have no school liaison officers there. Uh, but that's what that money comes from. Um, and, uh, so still, you prepared this and, uh, and discussion with, uh, different Department Heads and elected officials, uh, looking at their numbers. It's our best guess at this point.
So my second question then is, are all the Department Heads or elected officials, for all the figures we see here, players with your plan or not?
No. And when you say players, what do you mean? Are they participating in furlough?
Exactly.
No, uh, I, I can just kind of read through a little, just to give you a sense of where we are right now. Um, we have, Department of Aging has roughly 18 employees. Um, HR's got a couple. Um, Parks has got two. FOC is, looks like maybe up to 10. Facility's potentially one. Um, the courts, uh, District Court and Circuit Court, uh, none at this time. Um, JC Doc currently has none. Airport, none, but remember, uh, for those of you who may not understand, um, uh, the scope of some of these apartments, Airport has, uh, four people. Uh, so it's, it's, it becomes a little different question. Uh, equalization, and all honesty, equalization, uh, they're short staffed. We may actually have to add staff there. Uh, especially given that, uh, some of the townships want us to, uh, pick up their assessing work. Um, and, uh, and in all honesty, we want to be able to do that. It does create a more efficient process across the county. We end up with um, better numbers and the like. Um, but those, those contracts pay for themselves if we pick up assessing for a township or something to that effect. Uh, the Health Department, um, while they might be the tip of the spear, they do have, uh, let's see here, uh, two, three, uh, they have, um, two, they have almost seven, seven point something. Because there's some part-time folks involved in that there as well. Um, but, uh, moving down the line, currently, the Youth Center is, is, um, uh, not feeling, they've got a couple of open positions that they're not going to fill right now. Um, you know, and moving on down, some of the positions, the Treasurer currently is, uh, has none at this point. She can, uh, furlough. Uh, Prosecutor has none at this point. He's, uh, believes he can furlough. Uh, and Finance, much the same, uh, and Public Defender, of course. And you also need to, uh, and it, again, I keep saying it's complicated because everything is. But remember, they, a lot of them have different revenue streams. Some of them we pay 100%, some of them we pay none uh, for a particular department. So when I look at this list, uh, there's, you know, the people making the list, they're not necessarily looking at those kind of questions. They're, they're just looking at what do they have, uh, for staffing needs, uh, and service level needs that they can meet. Uh, so much work yet to be done, but we wanted to, uh, move quickly, at least try to put some folks on the board. Um, and the, uh, I just, uh, I just got a text. District Court actually has two open positions currently not filled, so that, that is helpful. We, we are appreciative, appreciative that they haven't filled those. Uh, but it is, um, it is something that, uh, sadly, we are going to be talking about a lot. Pardon me? Okay. Other questions?
Do you need us to make a motion here, sir?
I, I would ask for you to authorize us to do the furlough and to, uh, advance that insurance, the health insurance, maybe.
Corey?
One last question. The paying back of the 20% of the premium that all employees pay anyways, has that been, has that been discussed with the labor union?
Has that been discussed with the labor union? Uh, not by me. It might be by HR. But the alternative is no insurance.
Okay.
We're doing a solid there.
All right, thank you.
Looking for a motion. Moved by Walls? Supported by Darius?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments?
Can you state the motion, sir?
The motion is to direct the Administrator Controller's Office to begin the furlough plan as per laid out uh, for COVID-19. All in favor? Motion passes. Motion passes. Be aware that we're going to public comment at this time, followed by commissioner comments, and I would like everyone to stay online, because we do have a closed session after we finish commissioner comments. Starting with public comment. Michelle, you did a very nice job last time running it. I'm going to go ahead and let you do it.
Jessica Petrick. No comment?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I said, we just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Poleski, and thank all of you for your two hours and a half of time. Thank you.
Okay. Just trying to find if anyone else is still on that wanted to public comment. Michelle Shelton?
No comment.
No comment. Okay, thank you. He's not on anymore. Okay, John Walker.
Thank you, commissioners, for your service to our community. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney, Commissioner Williams, Anna, thank you very much for looking after the welfare of our community. It is unfortunate, the decision that was made. This is not an issue about health and safety versus civil rights, or versus rights. So to all of you commissioners, I wish us the best. These are some very difficult times. And again, thank you for your service. Thank you for taking my public comment in the end. To all of us, I wish us the best and the best guidance. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Scott Vitale.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I appreciate everybody's time, as everybody is well aware, our circumstances are unprecedented. I just think that, at this time, I would like the commissioners to know that I have been at the 12th District Court for the last 20 years combined. I left for a short period of time, came back, and have been fortunate enough to work with some of the best people in this county and the best administration staff that we have been open and transparent with over the last month, since, as you are all aware, our first COVID case came through the fifth floor. I have seen a great number of sacrifices and working for the quote-unquote "common good" of the county. And I think sometimes the 12th District Court and the court in, in general is sometimes levied with a lot of burden with employment issues. And I would hate to see the sacrifices that we've made with giving up drunk drivers assistance funds, losing employees through attrition and not hiring back. We have made a great number of sacrifices, like I said, at the 12th District Court. And I think sometimes that gets misrepresented.
Thirty seconds.
And I hope that the commissioners, as, as a whole, will look at what the 12th District Court has done to help the situations with our budgets over the past X amount of years, and especially in this circumstances. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you'll consider those options that we have worked with, the county with.
Thank you. Aaron Losi, would you like to say anything? With that, then there would be no further public comment.
Moving on to commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Bear.
Well, not all doctors agree on how to proceed with this virus. The models are just models. They are not facts. That's why the models that terrified everybody and caused this shutdown keep getting modified and modified, because they are not facts, they are models. If you lock up the sick, that's a quarantine. When you lock up the healthy, that's tyranny. Those who are willing to sacrifice freedom and liberty for some temporary security usually end up with neither. To me, this is all political. This is a continuation of three years of trying to get rid of Trump, and this is nothing more than typical political. The greatest thing Trump had for his recamp, for his campaign was the economy. So what do people have to do that don't like Trump? Destroy the economy. And.
Well, made a tough decision tonight, and pretty sure all nine of us know it might not be the last one we have to make. And I hope everybody watching this meeting takes a look at that as an example, because a furlough is bad enough. Layoffs will be worse. And I'm going to tell you right now, you know, I studied a lot, a lot of labor economics in college. We are facing a tough, tough road if we don't start opening parts of our economy that can operate safely back up. It's not a joke. You're afraid of the virus, you better start getting afraid of poverty. You better start getting afraid of not being able to pay your mortgage, because the government can't keep funding out money forever. So all the decisions we made tonight, they're not easy. And quite frankly, the resolution we passed, all this is expressing our opinion to Lansing. But I hope they take a look at it. I understand personal safety. Like I said, I've been doing this since it started. I've been at work every day in it with hundreds of people coming by me, all right? We got to get this economy open back up, and it's not political, that's the reality of life.
Any other commissioner comments? Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session in accordance to MCL 15.268, an attorney opinion on case number 2:18-CV-13425-VAR-APP will be discussed.
So moved. Or?
Have a motion? I didn't see the support. Thank you. A motion by Tony, supported by Darius. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Poleski? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Will Michelle be listening to all this?
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy? Okay. Commissioner Duckham? Thank you. Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Yes. Unanimating. So, Mr. Chair, you can call us back in the session.
Entertain a motion to return?
So moved.
Moved by Tony, supported by Darius. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need some votes here, guys. Corey?
Down.
You don't want to come back into open session?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got mixed up. Yeah, we'll come back in the open session.
Okay. We're back into open session. Amanda, are you comfortable calling the roll on this?
I can do the.
David Elwell, would you please make your motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we accept the attorney's recommendation on the opinion on case listed in the closed session minutes that you previously cited to move into closed session.
I'll support it.
Moved by Elwell, supported by Walls. Amanda, are you ready to call?
I am. Forgive me, do I start with Commissioner Poleski at this time, or Commissioner Mahoney? I can't remember. I think it's Poleski.
I would allow you to start with Daniel, if the interrogator is the chair.
Okay. Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Duckham? Commissioner Tuck?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Chatwell?
Yes. Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion by Kennedy, supported by.
For.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are so adjourned.